Zero one and parcel zero nine three.
So is this existing home on it now? They just want to replace the home zone?
We think it was restored at one time.
Okay, go over moving that and just put it right there.
And they already have a demolition permit that this is approved order from inspections to demodul.
I wondered why it was commercial. I was like, everything is already around it, but that makes sense. I don't live a mile from there and didn't know that. I can't see how that would be anything better than approved. I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
And as for a resounding application of five four one to twenty five, so all in favor say aye. Any nays? I hear none. So, so approved. So, thank you. So that's all the business for this meeting. Do anyone have anything to bring to the board or any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, well, if I get a motion.
My friend with April today, she asked me where we were on making the changes to the subdivision ordinance. And I told her that I would touch base with you all and try to see if the committee can meet again, whatever date works for Daniel, yourself, and John.
I guess the big question is, is like, the time, you know, like, I mean, whatever we send up, I mean, it's like, you know, the county did pay a lot of money the first time. And then for us to use our time, not saying that I don't want to do it, but I mean, it's going to take a significant amount of of work to go through that. Not saying that it's not warranted to do, I just, I feel like we really need, I don't know, it seemed like we need somebody else to come in and explain. I mean, because this is way over my pay grade, I mean, I.
The reason it changed, were there segments of the old one that, that, that they wanted out?
The state adopted a whole new set of planning and zoning rules and subdivision regulations. There were certain things that they required that were not in our existing ordinance.
I never give a gun around.
And so, and, and they have to try to get it done right. They contracted Kevin Patterson contracted, contracted it with council of governments. And the lady that they sent over here tried to plug us into somebody else's ordinance, huh? I mean, basically, would you say that's a fair assumption, John?
We had to by a certain date redo our ordinance to meet minimum standards of one sixty D that the state came up with. And, and in doing that, we had to meet those minimum requirements, but at the same time, she copying, pasted from another county that has way more development and definitely different atmosphere. And it's gotten very complex and I even struggle with it. We need something simpler.
How many are that are on this board now or on there when that happened?
We all were here, but the problem is, is we had a date that we had to approve by or a state.
I'm not, I'm, no, I was, I was. I'm just, just saying. I know I'm the greenest clown here, but I didn't know whether anybody else was just.
I know I was, you and Jim Smith were.
Yeah.
I don't know about Daniel, man.
Yeah. Daniel, um, no, not whatever. No, it was, it was Cleo.
Jim McMillan.
Cleo Graham, Jim McMillan, yourself.
That's what I thought he was.
And Jim Smith. No, I don't think.
I just wondered how far behind I was, because I feel like I'm in the dark.
In fairness to John, he did fight every, I mean, he.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking that side of the point.
Oh, I'm just saying. We're just saying that none of us, I don't think, especially me, were happy with it.
It was appealed, you just forced down your throat.
More or less, and we.
We were kind of on a.
We were on a tight deadline and she had a surgery to put us back in the very beginning and the review, the whole process we had to go through, we were like up against a wall and I got some things changed, but she was not easy to work with. But we had to approve it with the understanding we'd be making changes in the future.
They spent a lot of time on it, too.
Yeah, we had tons of meetings.
Well, I can see where it's going to take a lot of time, just as you said.
The whole thing is, is like, do we have the time to commit to, I mean, I know we have to, obviously, the county, you know, wants it done, but it's going to take time to, I mean, to go through the ordinance and see what's applicable to us as Scotland County versus what is already in there.
Do we have any subdivisions in the pipeline?
I got one, but he's put on hold because of the issue we had last meeting.
No, I think the last one that came through the pipeline was the mobile home ordinance and that's already been approved.
Major subdivision. I got one that's going to be coming, but he's put on hold until we get this figured out about the show and is going to be issued. Or the same scenario, all fronting on public right of way. It's just because it's going over four lots or whatever.
And stuff like that, I feel like that's what April and I talked about, like, if you can just write a list of, we would not like four or more lots to be considered. And then she said that it would give the commissioner something to work with and then we would go with the wording of it at a later time. And like, um, is it if it's facing a public right of way? And you're not like putting in streets and like things to, that we ran into, if we could make a list of those, then that would at least give them something to work with.
So something adjoining a public right of way, uh, state road or whatever, you wouldn't limit, you, you would have more than four as a minor, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the problem is, is the one sixty D says anything, what it's seeing four lots, it's a major. But it might be five lots, but it's all fronting on public right of way. There's no new roads, no new anything other than creating lots. So we have to go through the planning board because of one sixty D. But prior to that, it would just be a minor subdivision. She would approve it and move right on. It's the simplest, as simple as it is.
Do we hang go back to that?
Not because of one sixty D, once you've seen that amount of lots.
Well, I think one of the things you were thinking about, and I thought it was a good idea, is to streamline the process for what they classify as major. So that you don't have to submit a preliminary, have it reviewed, then submit a second thing for the planning and zoning board to review again. And then go to the commissioners with it.
I agree with that.
It's like there's too many steps there.
In the first one we did, if I remember correctly, we basically went ahead and went ahead that night and approved the first step and the second step, so it would go on to the kind of commissioners.
Like the final thing would end up being at the commissioner's meeting.
Well, we just need to switch the ordinance out so that we're not violating our ordinance to do it that way.
One thing that I wonder is put as the intent of some of this, because I just, you know.
It was easy, it was easy to copy and paste for her and the county, I think it was Bladen County, was it? Was it Bladen? Bladen, I think it was. Bladenburg, I can't, anyway. She'd already developed it and she liked it and she just copied and pasted more or less. And then when I started asking questions or asking for changes, she got upset.
What was the lady's name?
I should remember as much as I'm not fond of her.
But we need something that facilitates people being able to develop their property here, because we don't have any develop.
My only concern is, once we do come up with verbiage, is having somebody educated enough in that field to approve it, to make sure we're not doing something to violate. One sixty D is the biggest thing we don't have to violate, which it's really not going to be that hard, because I've read through it so many times way back when. But, you know, it may be sufficient, but if they're not comfortable, we may have to get somebody else.
That's probably why you're on the committee.
Gene Klein?
Gene Klein, I said.
I just, years ago, with some of the zoning stuff, and it was, I, I'm talking about way back there, Hill, with Wagram's rewriting theirs and they sent people in, and I don't think she was there.
They, they used her too, because their book is, I have, I don't have.
Now, that, they may have done it since then, because I'm talking on those.
Well, that, every municipality and county had to revise their ordinance to meet the minimum of one sixty D by a certain date. So every county municipality across the state had to do it, if I understand correctly. Wagram's had to redo theirs and she.
No, this would have been like forty years.
I know, but I'm talking about currently, because I had a situation where I took, showed you, where they, she'd written a letter and signed it saying that we could cut, they could have cut that half acre parcel off with a thirty foot easement all the way back there to it. And, uh, you know, when I want to talk easements, she told us we had no authority. And then she sat there and signed this letter for the town of Wagram as reviewed that proposed division. But yeah, you can put easement all in, oh, frustrating me, but I feel like.
They can?
Yeah.
The same one?
Yeah, very same one. I got, I got Brooke, it's been two years ago.
The thing that with lots, subdivisions, easements, you know, twenty-five years ago, the county officials had a fit because there are roads that go off the road maybe a quarter mile and you could almost lose a car in them.
Yeah.
And so then they were trying to say, oh, you can't do that anymore. They've all got to be beside the highway. Well, you know, if you're taking a road a half mile or a mile off the road selling lots on both sides, that's a lot of people, a lot of traffic. And if it's not an improved road and nobody's devoted to keeping that road up, it's going to be a washboard. But at the same time, if somebody wants to be a mile off the road and it's their property.
They can still build a house and put it a mile off the road, but, uh.
Well, now that you've got, with this, now you've got problems with, you've got to have, what is it, one, one driveway per house. You can't own a hundred acres back there in three tracks and, and not have a separate drive there, apparently.
Well, if it's five acres or greater by the county, it's exempt. So then you can use one road getting in there from multiple tracks, because it's exempt from the ordinance. That's something we came up with, because that was a, one we had prior to that. And that's real nice for a lot of, uh, situations. I'm wanting to undo that a little bit in the sense of not being able to sub bite off the, without fronting on public right of way, because I've run a hundred times where somebody's got two acres, mama's house is up front and her health is bad and they want to put a mobile home behind it to be able to look after her. And the only road is basically going to be through her, the, the, the yard. So it's not like you're creating a eight hundred foot road with twenty people on it, that you ain't going to get to maintain it. I wanted to loosen it up where we could do more of that, you know, where the driveway is only two hundred feet through the yard. But I had to do it variance and kind of simplify that, because I get that a lot. And I mean, uh, that's not so bad, but I agree with you, because just being on fire park and trying to get down some of them roads in the sandals with a three hundred thousand dollar truck and, you know, you, you're going to tear everything off of it. I agree with that. That needs to kind of stop, but, uh.
Where does that, where does most of the writers to use his own property?
When you start.
You know, that's the thing that we have to, and another thing, if you're going to take, you've got a mile of road front on a three hundred dollar acre track. And you're going to line the road with lots on both sides. Airbase Road is a prime example in that it used to be fifty-five miles an hour down there when there's cow pastures on both sides.
Right.
But now there's eighteen different houses and one driveway after the other. If the whole county goes to that, then you would be forty-five miles an hour everywhere.
So how'd you leave it? Or, I mean, is she expecting some, some sort of, something from some committee or?
Well, she, she did ask where we were with it and I told her we had not met. And she would like to know that we're going to meet and that we will have something for them in the future.
You mean, who did you just say?
I'm really, I was saying.
I thought you were, but I thought you said Brooke had asked that.
I'm sorry, April had asked me about it today.
I saw Amy, that's why I'm.
John, if you had a, a list of five things that you thought would help the process.
It's kind of up to you, because we don't know, you know more than information than.
Well, he works with us.
Yeah, than we do.
I'm saying some other counties that I really like. The only.
Well, now, see, that is the type of thing that I don't know where we'd find those ordinances, but we need to be comparing ours to similar counties. But now, Hope County now, I mean, it used to be comparable, but with Fort Brine, no more. And, uh, but now.
Probably more like Anson County.
Anson is probably it and, and, uh.
The, the, the biggest problem I've got is, like you say, where you divide the line when we start going multiple houses off the road and putting a road in. Because, you know, um, that's where, I would love for more houses to be off the road instead of having to front on the public right of way. But the problem is access being maintained and being able to get an emergency vehicle down the roads. And, um, I know Moore County, god, twenty years ago, when they redid the ordinance one time and they put it in where you had that forty-five foot minimum right of way. And the road had to be to DOT specs minus asphalt.
This is for individual lots to be on those?
To be able to put lots on a, uh, off the state maintained road. But they had to build, construct the road to a DOT standard road minus asphalt. But even then, eight years of driving cars down this drain.
Put more crescent rain down and, yeah.
Yeah, then you got a problem, who's going to maintain and keep up with it? That's the biggest thing. So then I thought about.
Do a road maintenance agreement with a lot of them?
Yeah, but if you can't get everybody to cough up the money and.
Oh, I understand that.
You know, you know where that's going. But I mean, that sounds like a great solution, but I don't think that would work.
Well, I don't think it solves everything, that's all.
So my, my thoughts, if we did do one, maybe put some kind of standard like that and limit how many dwellings you can put on one, like, road that's not paved. I mean, we might can do it where there's no vegetation, but then again, all right, so you make these requirements, who's going to police it? You know, there's the.
Well, you know, I, I mean, if you have a list of four or five things, just quick to.
But that was just one of these, but you're right. Yeah, there's some other things I really want to change.
Well, you know, it's been probably twenty-five years ago that they want to outlaw flag lots where basically you sell a, a right of way to it and it goes back to a bigger track. And then there's another one and another one and another, but you see, you see roads in different places where they're side by side. And yet it's not two lane road, it's two different drives going to two different.
Right. We got flag lots now. I did get that back in there. The problem was is, uh, prior to Brooke, they were really against them, but some cases they're the only solution. And I wanted to put some minimums, which we did get, some minimum width and stuff like that, so that you're not putting a ten foot strip for a car and utilities, you know, so.
You mean width of the eating?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we put some clarification on it so that we could have some of those.
Well, you know, these are, these are opposing issues that we, we, we need to kind of consider and shoot the bill or come up with something that makes sense, but, uh.
The target time that I see is where families got a few acres and they're wanting to leave some to the kids and, and cut off. And I got a situation right now, Brooke probably heard about it, but they keep stacking lots behind, or tracks behind tracks, behind tracks, going straight off the road. I'm not totally against it, but, uh, you know, it just gets down to the driveway and it being maintained, you know? I'm, I've been, that's my biggest thing, trying to find a happy medium to work for us in doing that.
So that works under the subdivision also?
Yeah, but you can't do it with the ordinance we got now unless you can, or you can tell me differently. Uh, it's, I'll be honest with you, I'm so dead going confused by that thing.
You'll see tracks that, and a state was settled by the courts. And he's striped like a, a flag, right off the highway. One prime example is up here Anderson Park off two five oh one. A narrow strip that goes all the way back. And he's got a road down one side and, and trailer stacked in there at an angle. But, I mean, it's, it's almost an unusable tract of land when you've got it split in certain ways like that. And it's not for us to tell them how to split it. But maybe it is for us to suggest, but in court situation, you don't suggest anything. But I'm just saying, consequences of what we come up with or different ones, it, it leads to some messes down the road.
Some of them just don't have a real good solution.
Well, that's true.
You don't want something crossing the pine cone up there, you know?
Yeah.
And see, there's, there's tracks across the county that hadn't been settled in six generations. I know some of them, but the, the original owner is six generations back, but there's a man with his same name that's not related to him that's paying the tax. I guess he pays it seven years, it's his.
No, you know, you got color title, right?
You don't get it by paper cash.
That's, that's, that's just, that's just.
What I'm thinking, yeah. Well, I think what they, what the board wants is to simplify to the extent with, within the law. It can be simplified, the subdivision process. I think they know that it can't go back to what it was, you know, when John was on the board before.
Yeah. I've been thinking about it hard. I don't know whether it's best just to take the minor subdivision and just wipe it completely to nothing and start with the one sixty D. I'm just talking about in our planning.
In the planning.
Kind of forget everything that's there and just put the bare minimum one sixty D and then build from that, if we want to add to it.
I think if it simplifies the process and as long as it complies with one sixty D, the commissioners want to expedite the ability for people to be able to develop and use properties.
Well, you know, sometimes it's easier to ditch that field and just weed it out, just start over.
Yeah, you're right.
That's about what we're talking about. No, I'm just saying, yeah, that, that probably is the thing to do. As long as we come under their, their rules, it sound like. They gave us a lot of stuff we don't need. Haven't they got curb and gutter in that mess? And that's worked just fine up around Raleigh or Durham or Charlotte, but.
That's the.
Now, that's crazy right there for Scott, can't it, Chris?
I kind of just feel like that was part of her copying and pasting.
That's what I'm saying. She didn't want to work the horn she'd already done.
Would work for us.
Well, you, you can't hard to find anyone, but well, you got curb and gutter and sidewalk. But you should require it.
I don't know, but I, maybe not sidewalk, but curb and gutter. So you have any time where you're scheduled to meet, or?
Whatever, y'all tell me, I'll try to make it. I'm, I got, I could, well, right now I got like a hundred yards to go. I mean, who knows in a few weeks, I may have eight miles to go.
I didn't feel like, when y'all were talking about doing that, that, that I was qualified. I didn't know anything. But with this book, I'm probably on pretty level ground with the rest of you on that. In that we're going to have to go through and study it anyway, if, if, I'm not begging for it, but if I can help, I'll be glad to. And I don't know whether that'd be a help for any of us, but.
I do think we ought to put in the major, like one of these situations we have so far where it's all fronting on public right of way, new, new roads, new utilities and things. Kind of a section there that, you know, if this, if you meet this criteria, you know, so there's no unclarity about N C D O T permit, all that mess, you know, so. Them root for you and it.
So you want to put a, a meeting on the calendar, Brooke, or?
Um, whatever meeting date you two can decide and you as well, Mr. Cooley, if you want to be a part of that, I will get with Daniel, because you know, he's on that committee as well, um, and see if that date works for him. I mean, I'm here Monday through Friday, so it doesn't matter, but, I mean, Thomas Milligan was a part of that committee and he is going to be on vacation, um, October twenty-seventh through the thirty-first, so.
I'll take vacations, huh? I mean, I'm pretty much, I mean, the only day that don't work is Thursdays.
Well, I wonder if we can get April to do this for us and then we would have to do it.
I spent Brooke nights probably way forward than ours.
No, I, I know, I know.
Um, maybe like the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, maybe that's the Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday.
I'll kind of ahead of time when I'm in town, about any day. We're going to do this during the day again, or are we doing this after hours?
During the day.
I don't know what you're planning on meeting, but the twenty-first, the commissioner's will be in here.
Oh, is it for their budget meeting?
Twenty-first, oh, that's a Tuesday.
You're saying about October, so you're talking about like next week?
About had to, if, if we're going to do it this month, because Thomas has been on vacation. Twenty-second is a Wednesday.
Yeah, I imagine the twenty-second.
So that's a week from today.
Yeah.
Okay.
What time?
Nine.
Okay.
Did that work for you?
And I'll get with Daniel to make sure that it's okay with him.
Because that meeting, we're going to. Oh, what was?
We're going to all have a, a rough draft or a list, John, um, of what we can kind of say that we want to, so we have at least a week if you can look over it or determine what you would like to see changed, so that we can present something to the commissioner, give them something.
But yes, we can look around us around the county that's applicable to ours, like maybe Richmond, Anson.
Would we have access to their?
Yeah.
A lot of them are on one.
I've seen some that I like, but the problem is, is some of my question, whether they meet one sixty D or not.
Who's determined that?
You have to look at the statute compared to what you're doing.
Maybe us or.
It might be like.
Us Ed or.
It might.
Us Ed or somebody else, I don't know.
It might be like that enforcement on, uh, road maintenance. That one sixty D clouds passed over, they may not ever look back at it. If we didn't have it.
But yeah, probably running today, somebody getting mad at somebody else because they got to do something they couldn't. And then if they draw attention to it, Raleigh, then it just starts coming up.
No, I'm, I'm, I, you know, we'd be better off being compliant, but if we weren't, I don't know that they'd ever know it.
Mistakes, those happen.
What he's talking about is the only way we come up right there, somebody else complaining about, Mr. Smith's got to do it, not him, differently.
Yeah, and somebody. Do you think changes the ordinance will bring more development to the county? Uh, no, but I, well.
It might.
Yeah, um, in the sense that.
He's holding one back right now, I'm calling up.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it would, but we can work on the ma- major some, but the minor's my biggest.
Well, if somebody doesn't have to pay you to do a, a sketch, a preliminary plan, a final plan, if you can do one instead of three, it's got to be cheaper.
You see, and I think her mindset was if you go through a major subdivision, like a deer cross, where you're going to have new roads, infrastructure or whatever, if you're going to have infrastructure into, yeah, that's kind of is a process, because then you got to get like DOT access, you've got to have a road control plan that, Divisional Work Department, whoever now regulates all that stuff. That, so there is a, a major process in that, and that's why you have that step. But, and what we're doing, I guess, we need to do a streamline for one that fronts on public right of way that's simple.
Historically, we've let people do that, up until all this came up.
And she, she, it's like her, she structured this for one who's like Hope County, who's just booming with subdivisions after subdivisions. Yeah, you probably need a little more restriction there.
Do it for rural counties.
Yeah, but we're, we're not getting deer cross every day or scotch.
You've got plenty of land out there.
Well, we, we're running out of land. People buying it like crazy.
Well, they're not stopping it, though.
No, they're buying it to flip or bust it lots.
Give me five acre tract.
Some of them are. And then some of them's hogging it.
Some of them been sold far.
Yes, some of them been sold far, yeah. I think that's slowing down, though.
And it's just you don't know how that's going to change with administration change or anything else.
Well, you notice you don't see them parading herself around town anymore or sponsoring the parade or showing herself and making a big hood do like, we're, we love y'all so much. You don't see, I haven't seen them. You know, they were real big about that when they were coming here, taking advantage of this rural counties. I mean, that's my.
Well, I think some of the incentives may be gone.
And if it is, it is. I don't, I don't know, I, I don't, I never got in that part of.
I think the ones you've already approved.
Maybe the last one.
Are, are hoping they'll, I think they're working through a process. I'm not dog with it, but I think there's a process they have to go through.
And I do have a proposed change on it too. I'll run it through when we do it.
On the, uh, on the cell phone one?
Even though we redid it recently with the thing, I want, I want to add something to it. Even though we redid it recently with the thing, I want, I want to add something to it. I would love to know what that cost was.
What cost?
Just to change that, because I remember the county commissioners approved a certain amount of money allocated to pay that attorney to revise it.
Well, that, that was done right.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I'm not saying. These solar ordinance, because prior to this, our hands were tied, so if they met all requirements, boom.
Yep.
And, and if we didn't approve it.
Well, see, that's the thing, that's the same thing with any of the zoning. Subdivisions or anything else is, you know, we need a, a list of, of checks and if they don't meet them all, then we've got grounds.
Well, that's what, that's what ordinance is for.
That's what it is.
But, um, with the solar prior to that, we didn't have much flexibility and, and, and. Asking more of them to even turn it down, you know?
Change it from quasi judicial process to a legislative process.
Yeah.
Which gives people more input, people in the community, like, like John Cooley or. Whatever.
Yeah.
Might want to come and have a say about it.
Or if it, it was, uh, didn't kind of meet our land use plan. You know, it gave us more flexibility to have, uh, more say so and, you know, is this the best place for order or not or. You know, you need to do this to.
Ability to turn it down to.
Yeah.
Well, you know. With farm background, it's different than a lot of people see things, but truth of the matter is, we're all gonna have to eat. And that's gonna be for a long time. But in Scotland County, when you take some of the most productive agricultural land and you put solar panels on it. When you've got sand dunes on half the county that are just spaced, there's no productivity there. That's where it makes sense and state owns more than anybody else through the wildlife lands. The state's so big on it, put them up there on the wildlife land instead of down here on productive farm land.
Yeah, that's one of our natural resources, we need to try to keep an eye on because it's not green energy when you take one natural resource. And replace it with solar. And, and we've got something a lot of other people don't, a lot of other counties don't have, you know, he was up there bragging about how they built out Nash where they can't add any more solar panels. And he was proud of it and I'm sitting there and.
Some of the most productive, some of the most productive farmland in state. Well, a hundred twenty-five years ago, when they divided Scotland out of Richmond County, they split it. One of their arguments was, well, you just cut off all the productive farmland and call it Scotland County, so now what do we have?
Yeah.
And you look at it, it's, well, most people don't know that stuff, but I mean, it's.
I mean, that revised ordinance is one of the things you can consider now, though, is its, its effect on farm, remaining farmland. That would reduce our farm. The green land.
And you know, we shouldn't be able to tell everybody what they can do with land, I, I, I agree with that, but there's a certain amount of limitations that, you know. But, uh, you know, I don't want to be known for Scotland County, be known for the solar farm of, of the state.
I think one of the main reasons for zoning is for. The neighbors to be considered.
Yeah.
There's no point in my play money. Being used to put something beside your house that you worked for all your life and that represents ninety percent of what you have. And I'm gonna take ten percent of what I got and ruin it. That doesn't make sense, that's not a consider, that's not the way it should be, that's where zoning should come in. Now, that's John Cooley's opinion, y'all's may be quite different, but I've seen it in the past. And it's not hurting anybody. With that to be somewhere else instead of right beside somebody's house.
Yeah.
I mean. I would probably be there.
I'll make a motion.
Hey, well, yeah, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion during.
Give a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
You done well. You done well.